Art classes for bringing down some art for our middle school and the hands up in the middle school and scenery around the walls is from high school. They're trying to dress up a little bit. They'll keep them down on a regular basis so every month we have something to share from those students. But I must say the things that are up right now, the students did a phenomenal job. I can see those at a lot of great places. Two things that are on my report this week. One is COVID testing and then the other one is the construction update. And I'll start with some of the COVID testing. We have the health department today and as people know, the governor's talking about testing and being able to give people the home-based tests if they're interested in using them, which is a tool to kind of help feel where their family is in regards to whether they may or may not have COVID. So before February break, I'll be sending out next this week, I'll be sending out something to parents, letting everybody know that we'll be sending those home. If parents aren't interested in them, because we do have some parents that really don't want them, they just let the school know we will send them home, but we are going to send two kits home with every student who wants them, whose family wants them. So I'll be sending those home before February break as a tool that will help. The other thing is still the health department is encouraging vaccination. So right now in Clinton County, we have forty-two point nine percent of our eleven-year-olds who have a dose of vaccine. Twelve to eighteen-year-olds, we have seventy-six point two percent in their county, and then fully vaccinated in both cases, thirty-four point three percent of our eleven-year-olds that are currently vaccinated, and seventy-one point three percent fully vaccinated of the eleven or twelve to eighteen-year-olds. So just good information to have. So the building project, we talk about it every board meeting, it's one of those things we look forward to being over with and done with. And I will say to you, we did have some correspondence with our contractors that moved into a lot of it, which is good. And many things at this point were really ramped up and were finished. A few things we're still waiting on. The good news, Sarah can smile on her mask and let everyone know she has her window in her office, which is now, she's really changed it without having the piece of plywood there. Interestingly, they're working on the safety purposes, the intermediate cracker box auditorium, the doors going into that, so they'll be able to close properly. And they look nice. They've done a nice job trying to match those to their permissioned classroom. So a lot of pieces have been returned over to us, a lot of things done in the kitchen and the primary, which is really nice. And we're fortunate to have enough room in our freezer and we're able to put some frozen foods for the backpack program in there, which is going to be nice too. So our families that are kind of from the backpack should like have that opportunity. And so we're still waiting on a few things. There's some things to be completed on the building project and it's some of the things that are, I say it every time, part of supply chain, part of things that aren't actually in yet, hardware on some of the doors. So for example, the new doors that we put in the intermediate, the hardware hasn't come in yet for another month or eight. And so that's where we are with that and our hope is, you know, hopefully by the end of the month, we're going to be close to closing out on everything. So we're waiting on the supply chain on some of those things. That's the superintendent's report.
Thank you. For those two who are interested, we have Peru Podcast and December and January, is that right, Mr.?
Yes.
December and January, Mr. Norman and I have both been on to try to update the community about things that have been happening in the school and updates on all sorts of different things. So every month, we pull on for a few minutes, try to get the district an update on happenings and what happened at the board meeting. Okay. Peru's sensation of things?
At this time, we'll pass our time along, there's a lot of agenda. Everything's been going well, people are looking hard, and thank you for the study classes.
That's a stressful part of the job, I'll say that.
But he did, I think.
For sure.
Okay, we have some administrative reports?
We do. Starting off, we have the technology planning group. Mr. Damiani's going to share with everyone and he's got, this is Pedro, who also shared.
Good evening, everyone. So, Mr. Norman said, I'm Dick Damiani, I'm the instructional technology coordinator for the district. And we have Steph Fietro, she's one of our technology teachers in the elementary building and our technology trainers as well, who wears a lot of different hats. So this is the year that we are responsible for submitting a new instructional technology plan to state education for approval. Throughout this process, we're going to work on setting new goals for instructional technology, how we use technology in the classroom across the campus. So we have started, we started meeting because the timeline is rapidly coming upon us. So we have to submit our plan for review to NAREC, which is one of our reviewing organizations, by April fifteenth. They will review the plan and we'll work and we'll kind of collaborate back and forth with them to finalize language, to hopefully get approved by State Ed, after the June thirtieth deadline where we have to submit it through the state portal. So working with NAREC allows us to really work with that agency that understands what the reviewers at the state level are looking for, and they can provide us some good honest feedback and guidance throughout the process. Our team, which I'll show you the stakeholder group that is planning right now in a few seconds, but our team meets every second and fourth Wednesday of the month, and we have our next meeting tomorrow. Like I said before, our goal is to establish the instructional technology vision statement and align district goals with the goals that have been placed by State Ed. So this is our group that meets. If you peruse the list, after, there's a lot of names on there, but you're going to see pretty wide representation across campus, from teachers to administrators to our network technicians and our student representations. We also have some teachers that are in unique roles where they're both parent perspective and teacher representatives, plus we have a good mix of board representation as well. One of the first things that we wanted to tackle was revisit our instructional technology vision statement. We wanted to align it with the core vision and mission of the district. So this is the plan, these are the, these are the expectations for providing instructional technology and the use of technology across our campus that we will finalize one more time at tomorrow's meeting, and that will be part of our plan, you know, as it gets presented to the board and shared with NAREC and the state. So we expect students and staff members to be aware of the impacts of community technologies on society through many lenses. Utilize computational thinking concepts and practices. Understand the interconnectivity of basic network and system design. Apply digital literacy to enhance learning and improve the community by becoming collaborative, productive, innovative, and ethical citizens. Protect data and computing resources that they access through practice or crashing basic cybersecurity safeguards. Remain intentional in all decisions regarding technology. So this will be the foundation for our goal writing. We're going to look to put together goals that align with this vision, and then we'll start building our action plan from there. Now, a lot of the decisions that, a lot of the information we're basing our decisions on are the newly rolled out computer science and digital fluency learning standards for New York State. So these are the standards that we as a district are going to have to adhere to and make sure that we are preparing our students for their next steps, both through career or college ranks. Steph is going to take a moment to discuss some information on these ones.
Okay, so the New York State Computer Science and Digital Fluency Standards were adopted in December of 2020, and they are under a umbrella of computer science and digital fluency, and so that's to represent all the knowledge and skills that the students are going to be, before they graduate, to be ready for the 21st century learning. Their vision statement is that students will know how to live productively and safely in a technology-dominated world. This includes understanding essential features of digital technologies, why and how they work, and how to communicate and create using all of those technologies. And so all of these standards are organized for us into five key concepts. Each concept has a sub-concept. So when we're teaching our students impacts of computing, we're actually teaching them how do computers affect all of us in society? What are some ethical reasons for teaching and using this technology? Should we be using some technology? So each one of those sub-standards has a standard in it, so each concept has a standard. So if you're teaching something and impacts of computing, and you're teaching it about society, there are probably two standards for society. So this is going to allow the students to achieve a standard by the end of a grade band. You have from kindergarten to first grade to teach one standard, about two years. And when you get to second grade, you're going to teach the standards, starting in second grade, ending that standard in third grade. So you have about two years. By the time you get to ninth grade, it's about four years of teaching a standard. So you have four years to teach that standard. Here we are on the rollout. We just finished the awareness building in September, and we're starting what they're called capacity building. So that's where we focus on curriculum, start getting our resources, and start giving professional development to our teachers. Why did New York State create these standards? Our students need to participate and learn all of these concepts for, to live in a 21st century world. So another reason is computing jobs. That's the number one source of new wages. So we have to prepare our students for what's out there in the working world. Computer science has also been proven through different studies that students perform better in other subjects, excel at problem solving, and are seventeen percent more likely to attend college. So it's benefiting kids in many ways. These are the five concept areas. I think I'm just going to pick one or two really quick just to give you a little bit deeper idea about what each concept is. Let's see. One of the reasons that New York State chose one of these concepts, one of them is our impact on society, how does technology impact us? So here's why New York State wants us to teach that. Right now, we are in our fourth industrial revolution. So that means that in 1784, we started our industry with steam. Now we're in the fourth revolution, and that means 5G, cars that park themselves, talking to Alexa, artificial intelligence. The Internet of Things also describes a network of all of our physical objects that work together. So your phone, not only do you use it to talk, but you're using it to lock the doors in your house, you're using it to watch videos, you're using it to do many things. So we need to prepare our students for that, and that's what one of the standards is going to do. Another reason that New York State is having us teach these standards is the job market. So there's something now called the new collar job. New collar job is sort of a play on words to blue collar job, and it originated with IBM CEO, and they use that relating to the company's efforts to increase the number of people that qualified for technology jobs through non-traditional education. So there is this group of people that are coming up. These are workers that do not have a four-year degree from college. They have, they are new collar workers, they're trained through community colleges, vocational schools, software boot camps, technical certification programs, and they're job apprentices. So we have to prepare our kids in high school for possibly that kind of work after high school. There are high school students, there's a high school student who started GimKit, and that was a classroom game show. So some of the teachers I know here have used that, but he did that when he was very young. So he's considered a new collar job. There's another person that in high school used drones and when they were in high school, and then they were hired, that student was hired by wheeltors to take pictures of homes for insurance companies, to, you know, take pictures of homes during fires. So those are the kinds, businesses are looking at people like that also. So that's another reason we're teaching this stuff in high schools. Cybersecurity is another one of the concepts that I showed you. Cybersecurity not only is important because we have to teach the children how to be safe, how to protect themselves, and what to do if they're compromised, but also in the job market, we don't have enough kids in the United States exploring cybersecurity. There are millions of jobs available, and there are not enough people in the United States to fill them. So if we, you know, start to teach that in high school, we're preparing them for that. Full implementation of the standards should begin in 2024, and that means that all computer science standards are being taught to allow students to achieve the standard by the end of each grade band. We have already here at Peru started a lot of the work. Over the summer, we had representatives from grades K through twelve, we worked for two days on the implementation and integration of the science and digital standards. Our goals were to investigate the standards, identify the standards that we currently are covering in our lessons, because what's nice about the standards is they're not standalone. The intent is for teachers to be able to embed them in things that they're already teaching, so teachers will be happy to hear that. We also searched for resources to support implementation, and we created working unit plans and lesson plans. And so in this, just an example, these are the standards that we created. This is the elementary edition. Connie Markowitz worked with, facilitated the group that was in the middle school and high school, and they also came up with things, we're starting to merge our information together. But we have all kinds of things for teachers to look at. So when we start talking to teachers, this is what we can say, here's, here are some resources that you can use that we already have in our district. And then the last thing, what we did is we took the actual standards from the New York State standards, and we put here our lesson ideas. So kindergarten, this is what you could do. Grade one, here are some things that you can do. Grade two, so we're starting to add all of that in for each standard, so it'll be easy to implement that and pass that on to teachers. And so...
So overall, there's been a lot of work going on with how to really adapt these standards to what we do within the classrooms across our campus. I'm actually proud to say that the work that Steph's team did and Connie's team did put us ahead of a lot of districts within our region as to where we are in the process. So when we collaborate with other districts, their integrators and their technology coordinators, we have conversations about where they are with this implementation. They're at the beginning phase, the grassroots, so they're just starting to explore these. Sometimes we hear, well, what is that? Well, also now we've got to take that. So like, we're actually ahead of the curve right now. We're going to continue the work that's necessary to get our goals in place, adapt these standards, and really kind of change how we provide education to our students.
Thank you. Thank you. Very much.
And now we have Mr. Berry, he's going to have to open up his circle. And he's part of here.
All right, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to kind of highlight some of the things happening in the high school in Peru along the lines of social emotional health. If there's anything that we found out with the pandemic, and I use this word intentionally, exacerbated some of the social emotional issues that our students have been facing. Exacerbated because they existed before the pandemic and, you know, it's so easy to say, you know, to a kid, you know, be a leader, or pick that kid up who's struggling, go do it. Well, let's do that with math and see what happens. Just, you know, do your math, do it right. Our kids are good at math because they get lessons, they get taught. So this is a systematic approach to social emotional learning and supporting students throughout our high school, middle school, and hopefully eventually a systematic approach for the district. So today, we're going to have some, we have some guests here. We have our leadership and human studies teacher, Ms. Gay. Mr. Perez would love to be here, but he's currently coaching a basketball game about forty-five yards from us. And then I'll go through a few other things myself here tonight. So Leadership in Human Studies was a course we built in partnership with a group called Sweethearts and Heroes. This group has been tremendous for our school and supportive of us. And really, what is it all about? It's pretty simple. It's about empathy and humanization of one another. Not so much polarization, but finding common ground and finding an understanding and teaching students how to mindfully go about that approach. And I'll say this, as I go through the slides here, I'm not really inclined to read all the words on every slide, but I think I wouldn't be doing these students justice if I didn't say their names out loud or anything. So our superhero instructors, Ms. Jennifer Gay and Mr. Lucas Perez, as I had mentioned before, but our superheroes in training, and we use superheroes intentionally because they may be, you know, and I hate to be, to bring it up and frame it like this, but supporting another student may be saving their life, and we don't take it lightly. And so here they are. Matthew Gagne Dupree, Marcus LaValle, Isaac Mitchell, Peyton Seymour, Allison Stanley, Ian Sylvester, Kayden Johnson, Mariana Campos, Delina Rivera, Leanne Cook, Jack Webb, Bianca Snyder, who we'll hear from shortly, Kendra Rivers, Alexandra Webb, Danica Trudeau, Reagan Lee, Grant Atkinson, Keegan Smith, Matthew Monteleone, Jocelyn Welch, and Savannah Prentice. And these are students, so just to give you an idea of how this grew, we started with eleven maybe who were interested and were like, well, I don't know about all this, and, you know, they, sometimes students hear this stuff and it's not cool, or it's not mainstream, it's new, it's different. We had to shut the course down at the mid-year point because so many students wanted to add it, once they found out what was going on in the class and how it was affecting the students throughout our school. Where does it come from? The group, like I had said, Sweethearts and Heroes, they're based in St. Albans, they're good partners with us because they're so close, but also invested in our school, and we believe in what they do, and therefore they believe in what we are. And I'll say this, the acronym is kind of strange as it starts with bullies, but if you know the history of the word bully, it's actually, has the opposite meaning in the sixteenth century. It's more of a sweetheart than it is what we know of bully today. So their acronym is Bullies Are Action-Based, Vulnerable In Practice, and that's an important piece of how Ms. Gay might go into a little more detail about that. Vulnerable In Practice: Empathetic Superheroes. So to get to the nuts and bolts, and I'll turn it over to Ms. Gay here and Bianca in a moment, they're studying the art of play, modern brain science, and unique social emotional learning practices with a systematic student-based approach, high school, middle school right now, and hopefully trickling on down, where we have our students teaching other students how to have empathy. It's easy for us, two adults, to say, go do that, go lead, go be this, but when you see, you know, let's face it, we all looked up to those students who were a little bit older than us when we were growing up, and we wanted to probably model what we did after them. So that's the art, that's the art and the science of this. And I will turn it over to Ms. Gay to maybe talk more about the specifics of the curriculum, and we can invite Bianca to talk about her experience here. And Ms. Gay, Ms. Bianca Snyder.
Thank you, everybody, for having us this evening. I am so honored, and so is Mr. Perez, who unfortunately can't be in the meeting. We are so honored to have this opportunity to share social emotional learning skills, being able to help the community grow within the high school, and we hope to grow this program even more in the future. We focus within our circle technique on the five social emotional learning competencies. Those are self-awareness, social awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, and relationship skills. And we do this not through a typical lecture style, it is through practical learning opportunities where the students actually learn how to facilitate a community circle, and they take the information and run their own circles, currently with middle school students, and like Mr. Berry said, we hope to continue it and trickle it down throughout the ranks. I would have to agree that Sweethearts and Heroes has been a phenomenal partner with us, and I know everybody enjoys when time comes. So I just want to say thank you. If you have any questions about the programming, or think there's going to be an invitation later, just email me or Mr. Perez. We would love to showcase what's going on in the class, because it is not a typical class, it is something extraordinary, and I cannot believe that it's grown to the point that it has. Like, I have students who beg me every day, can I please come to your class, please come to your class? And that doesn't often happen, especially in high school. So, thank you so much. I really appreciate having this opportunity to speak with you. Thank you, Mr. Berry, thank you to the board, the community members, thank you for supporting our students, I appreciate it. And I'm going to turn it over to Bianca.
All right. So when I went to my counselor this summer, I didn't really originally sign up for this class, I didn't really know anything, but I switched to CV Tech, so I had like some extra room in my schedule. So she was like, oh, we're having this new leadership class. And I was like, oh, that's cool, I'll do, I'll try it. And I was expecting it to be like a social studies class, like you sit and you get lectured at, you should say, you know, but when I went in there the first day, we did like a circle, and it was like, oh, this is like, wow, we did this, we taught this out in middle school, it didn't really work too well, but like, now that I'm in high school, I feel like I'm more like, I understand things better, not like fidgeting so much, and like, I actually pay attention. And through this class, I learned like a lot of stuff, like, wow, everyone has an invisible suitcase, they carry stuff along that you don't know. And it also showed me that we all have stuff in common, like as students, we're all going through the same thing, like, not really the same thing, but like, we all have COVID that we had to go through as like students, having to do remote learning, all that stuff. We all share stuff in common, and we can all accomplish that, we work together. And it taught me like boundaries, teamwork, just everything that I need to know when I'm going out of high school. And it helped me in the workplace and in my, I really liked this class.
And I have some testimony here. I have some, a quick, it's about a two-minute and forty-second video, some other students sharing that couldn't be here tonight. And the interesting piece about it is, I mean, I think many people in the room either can remember or want to forget middle school, or might be raising people in middle school, or have raised people in middle school, or experienced middle school in some way, shape, or form. It's interesting to see these four students who were interviewed and their perspectives on that. Sorry. But I will put a, I'll put a synopsis on it. Four students at the end in middle school basically said they asked their teacher every day to go and do, have this experience. They thought it was going to be something that it wasn't, and felt like it was a place where they were actually heard in a school. And I think that's important, I think that really marked it for me when I watched the video of that. I think a lot of our students don't feel like they're always heard in those schools. And that's where this, I think, was a tremendous opportunity for us to grow as a middle high So a couple pictures, they have the Brain Rules, John Medina, if you haven't read the book, The Twelve Brain Rules, it's a really good book. It has some really interesting concepts, so that's kind of the basis of what they do in the course in a lot of different ways, not the entire basis, but something to be mindful of as they go through the course. Consequently, the human brain was made to be in constantly changing environments, we sit a lot, so just something to ponder on, and the students ponder on it as well. The future, a blueprint, obviously, opportunity, there's a lot of opportunity with the partnership we have with Sweethearts and Heroes. Opportunity, there's a lot of opportunity with the partnership we have with Sweethearts and Heroes. Most recently, we have met myself and a neighboring school district, former teacher here, Mr. Francia. We met with the CBPH Foundation, who are excited to fund this, not only for Peru, but the entire North Country, some level of funding. And we're looking at going down the road with Leadership in Human Studies II, where we re-enroll some of these students. Leadership in Human Studies III, obviously. Recruiting for a Human, Leadership in Human Studies I. School-to-school connections part of this is trying to reach out and get some of our students, not just in the Peru community, but to reach out to the North Country community schools to make a bigger emphasis on what's going on here. And then the list of things that the Sweethearts and Heroes can bring to our school is pretty extensive. So that's the future. You know, this isn't everything that is going to happen. These are possibilities that exist. And BOE members, you're formally now invited to circle in public, so you can't blow it up. So you can email me, you can email Ms. Gay or Mr. Perez. Those are the times we run circle, and I'm going to share this with you via email. Those are the times we run the course, we need to schedule a circle. But the students and the staff are willing to go outside their schedule as well and hold circle. So that's what's going on in Leadership in Human Studies right now in the high school. Thank you for your time.
Do you want to send us an email on that time?
I'm going to send you this presentation. It's late.
Good evening and welcome to our first budget meeting. This will be an informational meeting. On an annual budget, on an annual basis, the school board is responsible for creating the annual budget. The annual budget is a financial plan. It covers a 12-month period. It's based on estimated expenditures and probable revenues. The school board's required to prepare this budget, and it becomes the legal basis for establishing the tax levy. We have a series of meetings for the preparation of the budget. We have a community forum, which will take place on March 1st. And then the next meeting is April 12th, in which we'll approve, or are scheduled to approve, the proposed budget. They'll be presented to voters. In addition to meetings, we'll have a series of workshops. Those begin at 6:00 PM. And they'll take place on March 10th, March 24th, April 5th, and April 7th. With regards to our '21-'22 budget, it was nearly $50 million. Covered a variety of things. Dominantly, costs associated with salaries, benefits, utilities, transportation, materials, supplies, equipment, et cetera. How that breaks out, in three fundamental areas of administration, capital, and program. Line share, as you would expect in a school district, is program, and that's at 76%. Looking at that same budget, another breakout, as one would expect in any school district, a lot of it is dedicated to personnel. Forty-three percent of the budget is dedicated to salary. Approximately 35% to benefits. Debt service is approximately 5%. And all the other costs are approximately 17%. With regards to revenues, our two major revenues are associated with property tax and state aid. We also have, we dedicate some fund balance to support of a revenue sign. As I indicated, tax levy is approximately 36-7%. State aid is approximately 54% or consists of the line share of our revenue on an annual basis. And then all the other revenue coming into the school district is approximately 3% with regards to the general fund. Foundation aid, which is the non-categorical state aid, as opposed to building aid, which is regarding, directly related to the support of our physical facilities. In addition, we have the tax levy allocations. To give you an indication of how those progressed over the prior years, you can see foundation aid and tax levy increasing over the years. Please note that the differential between 1920 and 2021, foundation aid was flat. In other words, there was no increase in state aid in regards to foundation aid. And then foundation aid increased in 2021, fortunately. With regards to our projected increase for this upcoming school year, we're projecting an increase of approximately 3% in foundation aid. With regards to the levy and the tax rates, our levy is the total amount collected. So a 1% increase in the levy is approximately $184,573,000. How that breaks out with regards to the tax rates, you can see this year's tax rate range was from $1883,000 to $2047,000. And you can see how prior years were. With regards to the tax levy limit that exists in New York State, there is actually no restriction. It's based on an eight-step formula. It's unique to each individual school. It establishes the levy limit. It accommodates a real growth, which is at the rate of inflation or 2%, whichever is lower. As you are all aware, the inflation rate is extremely high. So we are capped this year at 2%. With regards to the levy limit calculation in the CPI, you can see over the prior years, we had some years where it was at the maximum level of 2%. And of course, we had a number of years in which it was below 2%. This year, '22-'23 school year, it will be at 2% or the maximum level. With regards to the Fiscal Stress Monitoring Report, the Controller's Office does an annual review of all school districts and municipalities to determine whether or not that institution is fiscally stressed. They do this by reviewing a series of indicators. It was, the report was released in January of '22, so just last month. I'm happy to report that Peru's fiscal indicators were very strong in that zeros on such a report are favorable. So we received the highest ranking, which is No Designation, and scored zero points again this year, as we have in the two preceding years. The categories that one could be at is the best rating is No Designation. It could also be at Susceptible Stress, Moderate Stress, and Significant Stress. Again, we are at the highest level, which is No Designation. Comparative information with regards to fund balance, how do we stack up in this area compared to neighboring school districts and across the state? The undesignated fund balance as a percentage of the gross expenditures, we are represented, you can see the graph, at 12.3%. All schools are at 9.1%. North Country schools are at 13.2%. And medium state, medium upstate schools are at 9.1%. This is an area in which I believe that we need to make some adjustments and become more in line with all schools at 9.1%. So we'll be making some recommendations to lower this and lower the undesignated fund balance. One of the ways that we can do this, and that we'll be proposing to the board, is a capital reserve proposal, similar to what we did preceding two of the last capital projects. Setting some funds aside for a future capital project. This will reduce our undesignated fund balance. It will maintain the overall fund balance until it is, of course, used. It prepares and positions the district for a future capital project. And this will require voter approval in order to create. Fund balance analysis continued. In regards to our total fund balance as a percentage of gross expenditures, in comparison to other schools, our total fund balance is a bit lower than other school districts, a bit lower than North Country school districts, and a bit lower than medium upstate school districts. However, at 25%, we are still in a healthy situation. Our operating surplus, in other words, how much our expenditures were less than our revenues. Our operating surplus last year was pretty much in line with the rest of the state, as well as North Country schools, but a bit lower than medium upstate schools. So we had a surplus. So our revenues exceeded our expenditures last year. The essential budget face, essential budget challenges facing Peru Central School District. With regards to revenues, we're still facing the allowable tax levy limit of approximately 2%. Estimated state estimates for increasing at 3% in foundation aid. We are also going to be heavily dependent upon building aid. And we need to close out our existing capital project not later than June 30th in order to assure state aid for the upcoming school year. On the expenditure side, we have negotiated salary increases that we need to forecast. We are currently bargaining with, bargaining with CSEA, the district office, supervisors, administrator agreements. These are all under current negotiations. We've recently settled with the teachers. We have continued COVID-related expenses. We have uncertainty, obviously, with regards to unplanned expenditures. With regards to proposed budget guiding principles, we are intending to propose a rollover budget for instruction and operations. There will be budget proposals for you to consider. We believe that the proposed budget should remain flexible to accommodate an uncertain time. We do not believe that this year's expenditures in '21-'22, they have rebounded considerably, and it is unlikely that we will have as large a surplus or a surplus at all like we did at the conclusion of last year. Those of you who have followed a bunch of presentations are familiar with the fact that I, on an annual basis, have a theme. These are the themes for prior years. This year or next year, I believe the theme is really the theme of transition. We're going to be transitioning in terms of leadership. As everyone is aware, the district is currently undergoing a search for a superintendent. They will also be at some point searching for a new business official, as it is my intention to retire at some point during the next school year. In addition to transitions, we are certainly hopeful that COVID will transition from a pandemic to an epidemic. In that regards, we are certainly hopeful that the school climate will modify to a more normal environment. And again, those of you who follow my presentations, it is always the intent to find the right balance with regards to these three areas. That is, again, the intention of this year's budget. Our next scheduled meeting will be a community forum. That will be scheduled for March 1st at 7:00 PM. In the community realm, thank you.
Thank you for having me. I know one of the things that Steve, Mr. Barnes and I did attend a virtual legislative breakfast, talking to our legislators, Joan and Stex representative, and Nancy Dowd. And a couple of the things that came up, that we were really need pushed is that we've had that small capital project that we would put in at $100,000 a year for many, many years. It probably should be raised with the cost of things. Because anybody knows in their own home how those costs have gone up. And then the other piece was fund balance. The district supposedly has allowed a 4% fund balance. But again, a 4% fund balance, if you have any issue, any emergencies, can almost wipe it out. Small district in particular probably aren't so much. And again, that hasn't been raised in years. To see, you know, whoever you have that little savings account, like you do in your own home, have that little emergency fund. So those were a couple of things that fellow superintendents, you know, kind of pushed with the legislators to relook at some of those amounts that are from decades ago and bring them back to reality. So thank you very much, and on to the agenda. Okay, well, A through H, motion?
Yeah.
Motion, Mrs. Central Sec, this is Morgan, any discussion? And vote? I'm sorry. Approve, approve the consent agenda to A through. Okay, A through? We got a motion, I can't hear, I can't hear everybody.
We got a motion in a second.
Yeah, have a motion in a second. I'm sorry. I was thinking about all that money. Okay, 13 is A through G with the, the A, D, and I. We're having a motion in a second.
Motion.
Motion, Spears. Second, Mr. Hamilton. Any discussion?
Question on the ask, the girls across, is there any clause for the girls? They're in there. They're on. The only one that'd be charged for it, for the county's top.
All right. Now Diana's going to come in too with voters and give the, the coordinator, I think, give us information. You're talking about that, right? Okay, all favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. And 14, we got A through N. And J, there's an addition, and we removed some in K. We'll have a motion. Motion, Mrs. Gray, the second, Mrs. Morgan. Any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
And motion is carried. Fifteen. Each of those individually. Fifteen A, second reading and stopping of policy zero to ten percent. Seven nine, respectful, uh, graphic. Have a motion? Motion, Mr. Central? Second, Mr. Peters. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion carried. And then there's, uh, discussion and determine action when the school bus pickup drop off.
Sure. So definitely throughout COVID, uh, we definitely, parents have expressed their concern with the current policies on COVID drop off on our students. We limited parents' ability, our students' ability, only ride, uh, to one, to pick up at their house and then get back to the same house. It's definitely, it's an inconvenience to families who recognize that. And one of the concerns and the reason that we were doing that in the first place was, um, associated with contact tracing. And schools are doing the contact tracing in the same way as we were before. So I think that there's definitely, we've had some conversations about easing that up a bit for parents because it's definitely, it's hard because if you've got to drop especially younger kids who would have to, uh, you know, would go, won't be, won't have someone home when they get home, um, and at that particular house. So the idea of maybe getting picked up at home and then being able to go to another, um, a daycare or something like that would definitely help our parents. Parents have expressed that to me. So I think that's something we need to have a little conversation at. I think we have to really have conversations of, um, in regards to what would be a limit. I mean, I do think we have to be cognizant of, of the changes because it definitely has, has supported, I mean, obviously, it's supported the ability for school to get out in a time, you know, when they get kids home in a timely manner in regards to, would we allow it to happen, after, everybody have unlimited changes? Would we, would we limit it to, you know, two changes or, or something in that nature?
Does this affect the different buildings differently?
Well, definitely, definitely, um, right now, everybody, it doesn't matter what grade you're in. You, everybody's in the same boat. If you're picked up at, at your house, um, you go back to your house in the evening. And the only, the only, um, change to that current plan is if you are able to ride the same bus, you may get off at another location. It's all about contact tracing on the particular bus. But that doesn't do you any good if you live in, if you live someplace and then have to be dropped off someplace else. And it's, that inconvenience, it's.
So as far as prior to COVID, looking just to pass, could they, uh, do not to, uh?
So it, it definitely depended on the, on the building, right? Because the older they are, a little bit, there's a little bit more flexibility to it. You got the elementary school, they would call in. Parents would, would send in notes to the, the school, letting them know where they were gonna go. Some students had a plan. There was a well-established plan that was, you get picked up, you know, you, you, when you're picked up at your house, but every day you go to, you know, to a daycare or something like that. There was definitely a plan, but you wouldn't place it because they're, they're, um, riding. Now, high school's a little bit different in regards to, you know, they would have a pass. Because they, they're a little bit more, uh, they know where they're going to.
Then to this, where there's no obstacle for us to institute it again.
There's no obstacle to, to institute it right now. I don't think, you know, the hard part about it is. And I will say, you, I was, I felt a little reluctant because the thing I don't want to have happen, I don't want to put it out there and say, we're gonna switch and then be told again by the health department or by New York State that I have to do contact tracing. Because frankly, if we have to do contact tracing again, you can't do it. I mean, we'll have everybody out because you're, you're gonna, it's gonna impact so many people. So, but the, I had another meeting today with the town health department. And I'm fairly confident we won't be going back to the contact tracing. So I think it's time to start having those conversations. I just wanted to bring to your attention, bring to the communities, connect, you know, attention as well. And if you want, I can work with the leadership team to establish some guidelines in regards to how many. And I think we've got to be cautious that we can't have people calling, you know, two fifty saying he's gotta get on a different bus or today he's going here, tomorrow he's going there. There's gotta be some kind of, but in the same token, the burden that parents are being, are, are experiencing right now. People are, you know, upset about it. They're calling and saying, look, we, is it impacting my job right now? So that it didn't.
And I think we can be consistent because what has come down to me was that if, you know, the child's at one parent one night and, uh, you know, his custodial parents in two different spots, that causes a problem because the child can't be dropped off at that one spot. He could be on the other one. So I think that we have to look at the parental pieces and the daycare pieces, top priority. But I know too, we can't get in on data because I've been in those offices at three o'clock at night. And, you know, particularly in the elementary school where it's crazy with changes. So if there's a consistent plan for parents, I think we can work with that very, very well. That on Monday, it's just, you know, they're with dad, and on Tuesday, they're picked up at mom's and so on. And that one certainly alleviates some of the issues that parents are facing. And the daycare.
But, and, and we recognize that, that this is a thing that needs to be changed. The hardest part about this has always been throughout COVID is this contact tracing. When they stopped us when Omicron started and it was getting pretty heavy, um, and, and contact tracing stopped, that things started to change in how, how schools were handling contact tracing and what, what, how we're being told to do it. So it was very promising. It made us feel like that's an avenue we're gonna go now and be able to do this. My biggest fear though was, because it's not fair to families to say to them today, oh, by the way, we're gonna open it up and you can, you have a little more flexibility on transportation. And then next week, oh, I don't say, oh, unfortunately, we're back on the health department's end in regards to contact tracing.
I have two questions for you, Scott.
Absolutely.
First one is, with the changes in the bus routes that we've done, are we gonna have any, is there gonna be really any bus route that we're gonna have too many students on that we're gonna have to change the busing? Or if we, like, we know that there's certain daycares that have a significant amount of kids, for example. If, is that bus already at capacity? And if we add five or six more kids, is that gonna make us?
In order for us to be successful with it, you know, I don't know if I got the perfect change, but definitely, because where it's gonna be most impacted is going to the elementary school. So, um, Sarah, Mary, and Dave and I will definitely meet and have some conversations about how the best way of implementing it and, um, look at what we've done in the past. But then with, you know, fix those things is my, make them a little bit better and a little bit clearer and make sure it gets out to families and have a specific timeline that we can actually do that.
And you sent out a survey, you know, some sort, like you, some other things. I know, sight children attend the Y aftercare program. And like in January, I got a, a survey that said, would you need daycare during February break on any of these days and what time? So you could send something like what number buses your kid ride now and maybe find out from the bus ride what number they would ride and what days.
You're right. It will definitely be one of those things where we're gonna have to gain information from them. We'll definitely have to do a survey.
Yeah, and the, and I feel like the paperwork that we fill out for the buses is pretty well able, like you say, they use up the days that you get dropped off and picked up. I don't think it's ever been an issue with our school in the past.
Well, one of the, one of the areas, just so everyone knows, one of the, one of the concerns that, that I guess is always brought up is that piece of like, yes, the form is awesome and the form was always used very well. If parents fill out, it's that, it's that other group, there's gonna be people that, obviously, there's always gonna be an emergency, right? We always have, everybody recognizes that, but there are, we also have to address that issue with people and change it every single decade, you know what I mean? Make that phone call in and pull in.
That's why we have had something consistent and I think we actually learned that to the end. That was a great comment.
Great, great comment, suggestion. I think the survey definitely has to go out.
And I think we, if we can restrict it at first to the parental, custodial parent, parental things and the daycare things. Uh, and, and of course, emergencies.
It'd be good to get the information from parents to see what they.
Absolutely. And they will probably know whether, what buses are matched.
Can I, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was understanding a timeline, a specific time. You're gonna have a meeting with your transportation, you're gonna have a meeting with administrators. When you're looking at the time and the rule goes up, where the parents might be inconvenienced further, that's option.
I'll do it, I'll do it relatively quickly. Uh, we are full. It's gonna, it's gonna take me some time to get the information from our parents as well. So it's gonna have to be out the break, but once, uh, we're gonna be here. But I'll be, I will be sure that we have a good, I've had a little opportunity to speak with, uh, Dave and Sarah, Mary, and the conversation that left the community of, you know, how do you guys know what you're doing that?
The second part of that question was, is, are we, do we have a need for, or are we gonna go back to allowing middle and high customers to ride the bus home after tenth period?
So not right now. Okay, not right now. Um, we've, we, some of the things we've got in place right now for tenth period and, uh, plus the, um, support of the, the learning support after school, which happens between three and five, we have added a, a bus, a bus run currently, um, in middle school and intermediate school. We're gonna also be joining that. Uh, and so we're going to be adding, adding buses at that point, depending on our numbers, depending on what it looks like.
I wasn't sure because I know.
I think that we, especially in the beginning of this, we, we shouldn't add the tenth period bus run out of that. We have a run that's, that's running some of the time depending on, on drivers and things like that. But I think that's the best way to forward it right now.
Is there a digital solution for, uh, communicating these different bus, uh, options?
Sure, I'll talk to, uh, Mr. Damian, I'll do a little bit of that too. Because they know that's where, where now allows us to have the opportunity to put in our, our, your sick notes. If a student was sick, it's a lot easier process than it was in the past. We had to write something. So I'll work with them and see if there's a possibility there. And if there isn't, we'll see if we can. Be helpful.
Uh, do we have that nation have a superintendent work with a transportation, I think it is, a motion to have superintendent work with transportation and leadership? Motion by Mr. Thurgur, second, Mr. Peters. Any discussion? You have the discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
New business, we have the twenty-two, twenty-three academic calendar.
And interestingly enough about the academic calendar, I, Bonnie and I are having a sidebar conversation on some dates in regards to, um, testing. We were able to find some of those. So this is more of a preliminary look at the calendar. We'll finalize the calendar. Did have an opportunity to talk to Mr. Murray, your, uh, President, in regards to our calendar. And we'll, I'll be re-meeting with him now that we have those dates. Uh, and we'll, we'll bring the calendars forward next, next month, next year, I'm just kidding. Next, next month for finalization, but I think it's really important that everyone gets this. Hopefully we won't have any errors in it and we can just move forward and. This, the calendar currently has teachers coming in September. This is where it is right now, September first and second, um, for superintendent's day, first day. And then the first day of school for students will be on the sixth of September. And, um, we're, we're going to also maintain the snow day option that we did this year, which is regular snow days. Um, we'll have five of those snow days. And then when we go beyond our five snow days, if we ever had to due to a storm or some type of weather, then we would go to remote days. But, um, I think that that, that seems to be the best for, um, the community and the kids. And I think that that's, I think that's pretty important. I will, um, get the, the testing pieces on so that everyone can, I can share that with you as well. And then we move forward to get a, get a finalized calendar. There's not a lot of, um, a lot of places to go with the calendar, you know? It's, uh, pretty crazy.
The only thing was if any days were given back, um, the E L A test is, uh, April nineteenth. If we gave back to seventeen to eighteen, maybe the kids would walk into the school.
Right, so that was the, that, now knowing that piece, it'll be really important I meet with, um, the union to be able to have a conversation about those given back days and, you know.
Because that didn't come out until.
I know, it's funny, I'm like, how did you get that? I'm glad she did. So that's awesome.
Is, I noticed on the calendar that they only have graduation on Saturday. Is that, are we going back to a Saturday graduation? Or is that just a rule? No? Okay. No, but it doesn't, it just says, hold on the other one. Okay. I, I just didn't see, I just showed it on the graduation date as a Saturday. There was on the other calendar. Currently, I would say it's Friday and then rain date Saturday.
That could be an error on my part. I'll talk to, make sure Mr. Barry has it in his hands and he can tell us when real graduations.
No graduation, let's pretend.
Calendar will be in beautiful shape by next month.
Sorry, that was.
That's okay.
It looked fine otherwise. I just, I was just wondering if we were changing that.
So we have to have a motion to, uh, review the calendar and update it. Motion. Both, Mrs. Ford and second, Mrs. Gray. Any other discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, no one signed up for public comment, or somebody signed up afterwards. So you'll have, uh, motion to adjourn. Motion, motion, Mr. Central Sec, second, Mr. Peters. All in favor? Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for attending.